To order, tonight we have Reverend Hoag here to give an invitation before we start tonight's meeting. If you don't mind, sir, where is he? I know he's somewhere around here. Oh, there he is.
There he is.
He will.
Yeah, I know.
I want to continue to thank you for inviting us.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Before the break, I want to tell you that this is a great word of God. It always relaxes people in soul when you tell them everything. They're relaxed. How many of you like to give advice?
Only on Facebook.
There's an honest man over there. Well, part of what I want to share something with you. In God's Word, we talk a lot about advice. And if you want advice, all you have to do is go to God's Word. He'll give you plenty of it. And in Proverbs, it says this, "By pride comes nothing but strife," as the mess line says. But with the well advised, there is wisdom. When I read that, I thought, what kind of office is that? They don't really connect. So let me show that one time they do. How many of you have strife in your home? How many of you have strife in your workplace? Really? We see strife here sometimes. People can't get along. There's a lot of arguing in court. The source of that is pride, where the person doesn't want to yield anything because their position is the only position they can live in. The answer to that is with the well advised. So that's why I asked you about advice, because if you're well advised, if you really like to take in advice, you'll be able to handle anything. And God's the best source for that. And with that, I'd like to pray. Father, I thank you for the board of supervisors that we have in this county that they are willing to meet and administer for this county. For all of us here tonight, whatever the issues might be, that you would give them the words to say and receive. And I just pray for cooperation and understanding, not just in this meeting, but particularly in this meeting, but throughout this year, as we try to do the work of this county and as we do it, I pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Hoag. Always appreciate you being here, sir. Let's rouse for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you all for that. Next, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. And I know we got a couple of changes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair and board members, if you don't mind, I'd like to move two things on the agenda and then add one, if you would bear with me. I would like to move presentations in front of delegations of the public. We have Delegate Lee Ware here tonight, and give him a warm welcome. And also, I'd like to take the closed meeting, I'd like to put that before we give our reports. So right after the information items, if we could go and close session then. And then I'd like to add to J4, I want to talk about Nottaway Code update, and Mr. Gary Elder is going to assist me with that. So.
J4.
J4.
Code update.
That's it.
All right, board members, y'all got the amendments to the agenda. Is there anything else from the supervisors? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Right. Okay. Right now, we got the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Those minutes include July 2023, November 16, 2023, June 27, 2024, and September 19, 2024. Okay. Since there are all new corrections, the minutes are approved, circulated, and we're going to move on to the presentation. And welcome Delegate Lee Ware. Thank you, sir, for joining us tonight. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. It's a real pleasure. I appreciate the invitation and the chance to be with you. What I thought I'd do is offer you a couple of observations of what I anticipate this year, a couple of things that are specifically related to Nottaway, and then several that are more broad in their application. And I'll be glad to respond to questions or anything that you may have as well. First thing, I think, and one that where I've spent a fair amount of time since I have had the pleasure of representing the county, has to do with the water situation related to the three state facilities in the county, and of course, the town of Crewe. And I spoke actually two days ago, and then today with Secretary Cummings, the Finance Secretary for the Commonwealth. He authorized a revisit to the original proposal that was kind of slipped into the budget two years ago. And there has been an engineering study in the meantime, a company called Brockenbro. They have looked at that, and they have come in and made their engineering presentation. The secretary has done the financial review of what, how that would best, the state can best proceed. And I think he will, and I know, he will be briefing the town leadership tomorrow afternoon. He gave me a few indicators of which, where it would be, but he would like to make that presentation directly. So I think it appropriate for him to make that presentation. But I've been very pleased with the way he has stood up and stood forward to take a look at that and look at what's the best thing going forward. And I'm pleased with the outcome that he has proposed. And I'll leave it there. Second thing I'll note, and you may be aware of this, because I know it's been a matter of discussion in certain respects here, but there have been proposals, and there were a couple of them last year that did not pass, but they, there was a proposal to take away from localities the authority for siting of solar farms and give it to the State Corporation Commission. Now, the SEC is a very fine place. It has great capabilities in many respects, but I really do not believe that's the right place for that decision making. You all know your neighborhoods, you know your locality, and the same is true across the Commonwealth. So I, that did not pass last year, and I'm hopeful that if it's brought up again, which I anticipate it will be, that that will not likely pass this year coming. Along similar lines, another proposal that would take away authority from localities would make it by right, or give by right authority to those who are proposing multifamily dwellings with a pretty broad authorization coming from Richmond, as opposed to leaving that decision for localities. Again, I think zoning is an important element of what we do at the local level. And I probably should have prefaced this by saying, I served a couple of terms on the Board of Supervisors in my home county of Powhatan. So I've sat where you sit and made some of the similar decisions to what you, face you on a regular basis. So those are a couple of things. Another one that got a lot of interest was an authorization statewide for localities at their discretion to offer to the public the ability to, on a referendum, to add a 1% addition to the sales tax for the purpose of school construction. I will be very candid with you, I have historically not supported that when it first came along. I was skeptical of that kind of a tack on. But there have been eight localities that have been authorized to do that. And so this year, I, for the first time, agreed to it when it, when there was a proposal to take it statewide and to allow all localities to have that authority. That, it did get about a two-thirds positive vote in both the House and the Senate. Governor, as you may know, vetoed the bill, and the folks who had sponsored them did not try to override the veto. I was a little surprised, but that's where it is. And so it did not pass. That authorization was not granted to localities. But I anticipate that will come back again. I'll leave it at that. You all sent me a letter on funding for, on behavioral health, and I may not have the nomenclature exactly right, but you'll help me, I'm sure. And it seems to me, based on what I know at this point, that these are folks that the state is responsible for. They happen to be housed here for a period of time, but they're being sent elsewhere. It only seems right to me that these are state inmates, state folks, that we have the obligation. So I have sent a letter to the agency that deals with this. I'm still seeking clarification. The letter I got back wasn't the most transparent in clarity. So I'm looking for greater clarity on that question. But I appreciate you sending that along. It seems to me that's a pretty clear responsibility that the Commonwealth has. Budget preparation is underway. The agencies, generally speaking, offer to the governor's administration next month their requests, what they would like to see in the state budget. And then he will make his decision over the days that come thereafter. And his Christmas present will be his proposal for the budget of mid-December. He will present that to the money committees of the legislature, and we'll go from there. I would note that the, so far, state revenue this year is running a little bit ahead of what was forecast. We anticipated a mild recession. So we, while we saw revenues, we foresaw revenues in this current fiscal year as moving slightly up, they've gone a little bit more than that. I would hasten to add that the first three months of the year for the Commonwealth are not significant revenue months. Our, two-thirds of our revenue comes from the income tax. So that, most of that comes in the springtime. There are a few other, the sales tax and a few others that come in in the interim. But so far, things are running a little bit ahead of what we anticipated. That's kind of a brief presentation. Mr. Chairman, I hope that's helpful, and I'll be glad to.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ware, yeah, you hit on, I know, some concerns that a lot of citizens have had here and board members have had themselves. But I'll start with you, Mr. Toke. Do you have any questions for Delegate Ware at this time?
Too many to ask him in this meeting.
I don't.
The multi-housing that you mentioned, what more specifically, if you know regarding that coming from the state?
I'm sorry. Say that again, please.
You said the locality is having to do with multi-housing. You said it being an option to the counties. What, can you be more specific there?
I can be fairly specific. There have been a couple of times when legislation has been put forward. I don't know that it was this year, but I have been told that there's conversation about next, in the coming session in the winter of '25. And what it would do would essentially give authorization without necessarily there being local zoning, allowing it, authorization for multifamily housing to be put in localities.
That wouldn't ordinarily be allowed. Is that right? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. It so far has not passed. And it does, it flows from the great concern that many people have, and I think understandably, that housing has become a problem. The difficulty of finding affordable places to live in much of the state is a real challenge.
It is. Thank you, sir. Ms. Norton?
Yes, I just want to thank you for initiating the conversation with the state regarding our reimbursement for the inmates sent to Piedmont Regional from our state facilities. A lot of the citizens don't realize that we expended over $400,000 more than we were being reimbursed. And that's a lot of money on our tax, on the tax base for our citizens. So I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Steve, would you hear me out?
Just, Delegate Ware, thank you for your work on the VCBR and Co. Senator. And I get, I say, I want to say Mulch. I don't think it's right. I think she calls it Mulchi. I think it's Mulcais, is what she said. But anyway, thank you for all that work. The sales tax, the one cent sales tax with the courthouse, we're, so I met with the county administrators and met with the Cumberland last, this week. And they are in the process of building a courthouse. And the prices of coming back is, a minimum, is $650 a square foot. Now, you do the math, that's a lot of money to build a courthouse. And we, we in the process of, we are entering to a time where I think we're going to be asked to do the same thing, voluntarily told, I guess you want to say. But anyway, that sales tax is important to us. I'm rooting for Prince Edward to get it, because then I was going to start crying like a baby and say, you got to do it in Nottaway, too. And, but, and I understand, nobody wants to see another tax. But that would be earmarked for the courthouse. Am I understanding that that passes?
The way it has been put forward up until this time is for school construction.
Okay.
Or renovation. There's a fairly.
It won't be courthouses then.
Quite perfect. It is not for the courthouse.
That's what I was hoping. But anyway.
Ms. Ingram?
Yeah. Delegate Ware, I know you're probably familiar with the localities around here. Pretty much all going to radio systems, new radio systems. And they're very expensive. And I think ours is going to end up costing us, what, $670,000? 6.7 million, I'm sorry. So I mean, that's a big burden on a locality. And my, our emergency services gentleman is not here tonight, but he's working on getting me a rundown of how many times our emergency services go to the state facilities. You know, I think Burkeville goes to.
Piedmont, VCBR.
They go to Piedmont. And so if the state could help us out some, that would really help. Because I know in Prince Edward, what I understand is, the county is doing the system, but they're getting help from Longwood University, they're getting help from Hampton City, also getting help from the town of Farmville. So it's cutting down for them what they're having to pay. So if there's any way, and as soon as I get that information from our emergency services coordinator, I will send it to you. But I know we're having a lot of calls going to the state facilities. And that doesn't even count, I don't know how Fort Barfoot falls into this thing. But I know they've got their own fire department, but I don't know about emergency services as far as the emergency squad and that thing. But that's something that, you know, could really help us. We're looking at a big chunk of change for that. And then if a courthouse comes along on that, we're going to be, we're going to be hurting. So I will get the information to you and see if there's any way that we could work something out.
That'd be, that'd be very helpful to get the information.
Yes, sir, I will.
And particularly if Longwood has contributed, then we've got a state entity that's.
Right, yeah.
Well, quasi-state entity.
Yes, sir.
That's contributing.
But that's what I, I get the Farmville paper to see what the rich people are doing. And that's what they had in there. They asked them, how were they not having to pay as much? And he said, we're getting help from Hampton City, we're getting help from Longwood, and we're getting help from the town of Farmville. So they're all being served by that. And here we are in our little county, and the biggest problem we have probably is the state facilities, sending people to those facilities. So if there's any way we could get some help with that, we certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
VCBR, and Steve, I think the first thing we did was ask to bill the state directly. So the Piedmont Regional Jail would bill the state for VCBR inmates that came out of Nottaway. And we were told it's out of, it's in the code of Virginia?
Well, the way I understood it, since we're, it's a Piedmont Regional Jail, Delegate Ware, that we can't, we can't do that. And so, so right now, what's happening is pretty much of a guessing game. Like, the state will allocate, allocation of maybe, let's say, $400,000, like Ms. Norton was talking about. Well, it still could go $450,000, and we still wouldn't get reimbursed, some of it, you know. So we're trying to figure out a way, is it possible that it could be billed directly and not go through Nottaway and then come around? And that's what we, anyway.
If that's just a simple change to the code, or adding to that says Piedmont Regional Jail can bill directly for VCBR inmates, that solves it.
That would, that would solve it.
Dollar for dollar.
Very good. But that leads to a natural point to make, and that is occasionally, depending on localities that I represent, they will come up with a list of perhaps laws that were, things that they're concerned about in legislation. But they may also have budget amendments specifically. And this sounds like it might be a code change rather than a budget amendment, but we can, we can check. If there are specific items financially, if we can take a look at those together. I have carried specific budget amendments for various localities or entities before, and I'd be glad to.
And that would be more of our assistance to Southside Virginia Community College with their student housing. If we were to be able to get you some money, or get you some idea of what, I think it's, there's two barracks out there that.
Yes.
Need work?
Right.
And that, the school was interested in having additional housing from our.
Right, that's right. Looking for a third.
So we may be able to get you a number on that to help, continue to help Southside Virginia Community College.
Look for that, look forward to that.
All right. And I don't, I don't have any questions for Mr. Ware, but I do want to give you a pen here. And I think some of these folks in here are probably from the best county in the state of Virginia. And thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going back up and go to the delegations from the public. And I'd like to remind everybody that the, earlier this year, part of, part of the delegations from the public procedure was changed. So either you have to speak on something that is on tonight's agenda, or a board action that was taken from the last month's meeting. So with that being said, Mr. Abbott?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Bowen.
Steve.
I can only hope that what I'm about to say meets those qualifications. If it doesn't, just tell me to sit down. Now, as a member of the community, I respectfully ask that the board and our administrator help in reducing the rumors related to the relocation of the treasurer's office and any other move associated with this action. I truly appreciate the accessibility of our administrator and recently shared with him information that was provided at a school board meeting on October 10. The board brought out, or it was brought to the board on next steps of the feasibility study for determining if opening Burkeville Elementary School is even possible. Now, I appreciate that the editor prints what's available and doesn't make things up to expand his newspaper. The Courier Record cannot and should not be the only source of information available to citizens of the county. I have faith that the board will share the cost analysis developed for the relocation of any offices involved in dealing with the mold problem. I trust a complete comparative cost picture is being developed for the. I trust a complete comparative cost picture is being developed for the few options considered. What seems the easiest or most convenient way may not be the best way, especially with all the county money issues, isn't and shouldn't cost be a driving factor. Much like the relocation process of offices and recent, and recently securing of a bond for a substantial amount of money may cause concerns for taxpaying citizens. If the board, is the board willing to say that there won't be a tax increase simply to cover the bond issue? Just like each of you, every landowner is experiencing the increase in property taxes that are starting to come out with those increases caused by the reassessment. An additional increase may have detrimental impacts on the general public as the board begins the budget process in a few short months. And on a more personal note, there was an item that was published in the newspaper of something that I said about cash flow. That was inappropriate of me to say out loud. It was more a position that the treasurer took that was inconsistent, in my opinion, of her duties and responsibilities. Having said that, I just wanted to let you know that when I screw up, I say so. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Appreciate it. Mr. Carlton? Charlton?
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board. My name is Judge Charlton. I live on 713 Greenfield Road in Charlotte County. I cut timber for a living. We've been going hard, I'm tired, and I would rather not be here. I come here tonight to address the, address the board about things that were said about me at the last meeting that aren't true. You don't have to dig deep to get dirt on me. I am a sinner for sure, but I ask for forgiveness and make amends when possible. The Bible says God gave, gave His only Son so people could meet, like me, could go, could get into heaven. I am not against dog hunting. I have two dogs in the car with me. I've hunted, I've hunted deer for years on a dairy farm on the Plumucky River when I was working in Richmond, and I enjoy hunting rabbits with beagles and hunting ducks, and hunted ducks for years with retrievers. There are a number of people that still hunt on our land, and almost all of them hunt with dogs on other properties. I like to eat venison. It's true, our family has had problems with hunters over the years. My uncle was assaulted and threatened with a deadly weapon on his own property. My father-
Oh, Mr. Charlton, hang on one second. I don't see how this is relevant to any board action last month or anything that's on the agenda this time. I mean, I'm sorry what happened to your family member, but that shouldn't be before this board.
Very well. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearings, the special exceptions for Pavy.
Good evening, board. How y'all doing tonight? I have two special exceptions before you. The first one is the Pavy special exception. This is a request for a guest house that's located on 3298 Seller Creek Road, tax map parcel 32-83. And it's to allow, it's in the agricultural district, 45 acres. The Pavy's approached me, I would say, back in August or so, July, looking at options. They have an existing home, it's about 19, it's built in the early 1900s, about 75 feet or so from the edge of the right away on Seller Creek Road, and it's just getting to be too much for them to go up and down the stairs and whatnot. They have this gorgeous pond, just a few hundred feet away from the home, as evidenced in the staff exhibits I provided, that show some pictures of the approximate location of where the septic tanks would go and the home as well. And this home, new home will be about 1,000 square feet, right around there, one, one bedroom, lived room, and kitchen and bathroom. This is also, it's located in the agricultural district, which does promote, you know, additional housing and whatnot. What's really behind, what's going on with their request is that they're seeking to switch their existing home for this new home adjacent to, that they want to construct adjacent to the new pond, well, to the pond. This existing home will be used for guests. And I included the definition of a guest house on this, on the first page of the staff report. And I think it's very well substantiated that, that they can do this under the conditions as for temporary stays for fam, for family or friends, no payment will be required, they can't charge rent or anything like that, and it won't be converted to VRVO or Airbnb. Regarding what I've heard from the community, from adjacent property owners, my good friend Dale Garber actually reached out to me last week, and he inquired about this. And he, his only concern was what I just said. You know, his concern was whether it's going to be turned into a VRVO or not, and it's absolutely not. Also, because I have a condition in my recommendation for approval that states that they will, we, the county has the right to revoke a special exception permit for any violation of the zoning ordinance. So I just want to let you all know that. They met all 37 conditions, starting on page two. And again, I've only heard from Mr. Garber and no one else regarding this application. The planning commission heard this request on Tuesday night, and they voted with Mr. Green, by the way, welcome Mr. Green as a planning commission member to the board meeting, by a vote of six to zero. And staff's recommendation, as I mentioned, is positive, and I would recommend that the board approve this request with the following conditions, that the special exception permit is granted for the placement of a, of a home, and the special exception may be revoked by the county. Oh, lost my place, sorry about that.
Greg, why are you looking for that? I mean, Ms. Zodi, why are you looking for that? Just for clarification, you said you did speak to Mr. Garber, and Mr. Garber was in favor or not in favor?
Oh, he was in favor of it. He just wanted to make sure that there's no, no hinky, nothing hinky going on, and I said absolutely not.
Thank you.
These are good folks. So staff recommends approval for this application, subject to the conditions, following conditions, this special exception is granted for the existing home to be used as a guest house per the zoning ordinance definition. Number two, the special exception may be revoked by Nottaway County or by its designated agent for failure to comply with any of the listed or amended conditions made by staff, the planning commission, and/or board of supervisors. The applicant must have well and septic permits issued by the health department prior to occupancy of the new home, which will be occupied by the owners. Fourthly, must apply for and receive a certificate of occupancy from the Nottaway County building official. And five, no address will be assigned to the guest house. The existing address will be assumed once the certificate of occupancy is issued for the new home.
Okay. All right. That being said, board members, I need a motion to open the public hearing for the special exception of Pavy.
I so move.
Can I get a second? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the special exception for Pavy?
I think there might be a lady who wants to speak.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gentlemen, I'm Margaret Pavy. And Mr. Collins, you had said, you asked us who would be visiting us, and I didn't think to tell you, this is how few people visit us. So in the last three years, my younger sister and her husband came for two nights. Last year, they came again for two nights. And this, this past August, my older sister came for two nights. So we don't get a lot of company. We're here to relax and, and do whatever we want and not have to cater to people. And I don't mean to be mean and sound, but we really like the privacy, and we really would like to enjoy looking at the pond in the morning and during the day. And we also have a little fur angel that loves the pond, and being by the road so close is, it's really dangerous. She's been out there four times already since we've had her, and it just scares me. But anyway, that's what we would really like to do. We're not building a mansion, it's just a one bedroom, just like the guest house, one bedroom just for us, one bathroom, living room and dining room, living room, kitchen, you know, I mean. But anyway, so we're really, you know, excited about it, but-
It sounds like you're in favor of it then.
I am. Can I be on board now?
Well, you had me at fur angel, so. Do y'all have any questions of Ms. Pavy?
On the existing home?
Yes, sir.
I've got a picture of it.
Yes, sir.
It looks plain, well-kept.
But we renovated that, and it was a 10-year project for us.
And the roof is, the roof is newer?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So the maintenance on it will be slight while you're-
Right, and that's usually my job to maintain things. I try to keep up everything and, you know, cleaning is my job again, but-
All right, well, it looks like a well-kept property.
Thank you. We try very hard.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pavy.
You're welcome.
All right, is there anybody else here to speak for or against? All right, here and now, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
You wrote a close that.
No, I got a close.
All right. Make that motion.
Second.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing for Pavy, the special exception for Pavy is closed. Board members, it's in your hands. If I could, I'd make the motion myself, but as the chairman, you cannot make a motion. I fully support this, moving forward. But we will need a motion to approve the application, subject to the five conditions recommended by staff that Mr. Zodi read off earlier.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Pavy.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Mr. Zodi.
Sure.
Just as far as procedure.
Uh huh.
So we're going to approve the special exception permit, and you say that you're going to revoke it if something happens later. What's the remedy? You going to tear a house down?
I'm going to take their dog and move into the house.
Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, sir.
You know, we need to-
Yes, sir.
Be sure of when we do these things.
Exactly. And I think, you know, it would be, we would go the injunctive route, I would presume. But regarding the guest house, as, I don't want to belabor this since y'all voted, but what I'm going to do is, since there, I doubt there are building permits issued in the early 1900s, so we're going to identify this, and I've already spoken to the building official, and have, have it permitted as an accessory structure of the existing-
Existing as the accessory structure?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thanks.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, keep your spot. We're going to move on to the special exception for Coleman.
All right. We have a special exception request for a manufactured home. The applicant is here, as well as a representative from Clayton Homes of Chester. The property owners, Melvin and Joyce Coleman. This subject site is located at 1770 Rocky Ford Road. It's located on the east side. The parent tract number is 18-97, 8.85 acres, and contains 6.43 acres post-land division. They're cutting off approximately, the applicant is cutting off approximately 2.42 acres to give to his daughter, to give to their daughter, so she can place a manufactured, double-wide manufactured home on the site, or a manufactured home. This zoning for the site is rural residential. I've not heard from any of the adjacent property owners, but although I do understand someone that is in the audience just wanting to see the events. But I went on site, as you can see, I took some photographs. What they're proposing is to put the structure in the, toward the front, and one of the responses, one of the recommendations I had from Mr. Henson with VDOT was that they share a drive, just basically on the existing drive going through the home. And I understand there is a septic and well permit, and again, VDOT has recommended, and staff going through the 37 conditions, has deemed that this is, I recommend it for approval. And the, just to note, the planning commission did give a six to zero positive recommendation to the board for this, along with my recommendations. First recommendation, this special exception is granted for the placement of a manufactured home. The special exception may be revoked by Nottaway County or by its designated agent for failure to comply with any of the listed or amended conditions made by staff, the planning commission, and/or board of supervisors. Must have septic and well permits issued by the health department prior to the occupancy of the home. It must apply for and receive a CFO or certificate of occupancy, excuse me, from the Nottaway Building, Nottaway County building official. Number five, the proposed use will require a private entrance. The proposed 2.42 acre parcel and the remaining residual parcel will be required to share an entrance and secure driveway permit from the Virginia Department of Transportation. That's staff's presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zodi.
Hello, sir.
Right now, board members, we need a motion to open the public hearing for the special exception Coleman.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is open for the special exception Coleman. Is there anyone here to speak for or against?
For.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Thank you. Don't be nervous.
I want stuff in my notebook. All right, I'm Tanya with Clayton Homes. I'm representing Olivia Coleman. Her family is gifting her a little over two and a half acres, almost two and a half acres. She's going to use that land as collateral for her down payment. It's going to be a three-bedroom, two-bath, double-wide, very beautiful. The exterior walls are two-by-six exterior, well insulated, energy efficient, comes with a five-year warranty, 20-year warranty on the shingles, and a 10-year warranty on the And we've already got the perk test, we've already got the site plan, or I'm sorry, not the site plan, the plant. Yes, so the cutout has already been completed. No questions?
All right, board members, y'all got any questions?
I have a question. I rode by yesterday and today, and I could barely see the house in the back. Is this going to go in front? Okay, yeah, I saw the stakes, I just wanted to make sure I swear it's going to go. Good deal.
Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak for or against the special exception for Coleman? All right, here and now, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I so move.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Norton, I believe that's in your district.
My district, yes.
Do you have anything on this, or wish to make a motion or anything?
I just would like to make the motion to allow the Coleman's the placement of this new home as it meets all criteria.
Okay, and that's along with the recommendations from staff?
Yes.
Okay. Y'all heard the motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, moving on, moving on, let's see. Departmental reports. Ms. Barrett, how are you doing, dear?
I'm good.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Bowen.
Good evening.
I've got a few additional updates for you.
Okay.
So the Route 46 project, work is ongoing still. Currently working on columns and pier caps. They're finalizing some of the additional work and work orders to correct the existing pier misalignment and a change to the abutment piling. The schedule is still indicating a spring '25 completion.
Okay.
The Route 723, 460 are cut. That project has been advertised, and the bid opening for that is supposed to be October 23rd. So hopefully in November, we'll, I'll be able to tell you who the low bidder is, and that project will be moving probably in the spring.
Okay.
The Route 4750, Darbels Road Roundabout, that one is still on schedule. Right-of-way acquisition actually started in July. The utility relocations are scheduled to begin in May of '25 and will complete in November of '25. Typically takes six to 12 months to schedule utility relocation, so even if the right-of-way acquisition finishes early, utility won't start earlier than that. So the current advertisement date is, is now January of '26 instead of February. The plant mix schedule is still ongoing. Contractors still working on 723. Once they finish out there, they'll be moving to Route 460, East Colonial Highway. They'll be starting at the Prince Edward-Nottaway County line and will go to .4 miles west of B.C. Born Street. Primary and secondary mowing is complete. Now performing some embankment mowing on Route 49, back to the right-of-way line. I don't know if any of you have been out on 460- on four sixty going towards Prince Edward. The sixty mile an hour signs are now installed there.
I looked for them today and didn't see them. I'll be dead on.
You drive too fast.
Drive too slow.
Just completed yesterday, so... Currently, we're doing some sweeping, finished the primary bridges in Burkeville, and started in Crewe today, so you'll see a lot of bridge sweeping and curb and gutter sweeping going on right now. The request for the Shoot Road Speed Study is in the queue for a local review. We haven't started that yet, but that is in our queue to look at. And the last thing, the Highway Heroes event, which is next Saturday, the twenty-sixth, from nine to two with Chestfield Fairgrounds. Just a reminder for everybody, it is a free event. It's open to the public. It will be held rain or shine, and there's gonna be a lot of things there, especially for kids and everything. So, we encourage everybody to come out and take a look at it. This will be the third year, I think, that they've done it, and each year the attendance increases, and it's a nice thing to do. So, do you have anything for me?
The only thing I would say is, and I don't wanna jinx it, the crew here in Nottaway has been, I mean, I've had folks calling, talking about, we see a deer hit, and it's gone. Deer hit, and it's gone. I mean, they respond quick to those phone calls and move the carcasses, 'cause deer stir it up right now. So, people understand it, but we appreciate the unsightliness being picked up in more than an acceptable timely manner. Appreciate that very much. Y'all have anything?
You surprised me with the seven twenty-three. I had no idea. I pulled up to the stop sign one day, and all these big trucks are coming at me, and the things pulling up, and I'm like, what is going on here? So, that's why I was driving through Rocky Ford Road the last two days to duck out. But it looks great. It's gonna be great when it's finished.
Yes, taking alternate routes.
Anybody else get anything? All right, thank you, Ms. Bryant. It's always good seeing you.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. So, Ms. Norton had mentioned, and I don't know if you put that work order in, I gave you the number, but...
Yes.
The furniture, when it, if people drop off furniture or tires, and it's in your right-of-way, how far is the right-of-way, Diana? I mean...
Depends on what road it is.
Depends on what road it is?
Yes.
Usually about fourteen feet, I think. They did, the resident did call, and VDOT did come out and pick it up. So, thank you for that.
So, it all depends where the road, okay.
It does.
Some people have asked me that, and I didn't really have the answer for that. So, anyway, it's kind of, I know this, when I put, when I was trying to get elected, if you put those signs too close to the road, VDOT will move them pretty quick.
No, it was just show, they've never done that to anybody else.
Well, some people don't realize, a lot of times when they put out those political signs, they create a sight distance and a safety issue.
That's right.
So, and they also are an issue for mowing, for right-of-way mowing and everything else. So, typically, there's a letter that's mailed out to all the candidates, so they are aware of that before they start putting their signs out.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Happy Halloween. I thought it was gonna be scary here tonight, but pretty laid-back, eh?
Steve's here.
It's a full moon, too.
It is. Watch back, Jack.
All right. All right, board members, y'all have your departmental reports up to, up to number seven. I see that Ms. Myers here. Do you have anything for the school?
And I just wanna say this. I put the two no deficiency letters, 'cause you don't see them. I have like a little trophy I stuck in there.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's good news. You're not gonna see that nowhere.
It don't last long.
But yes, the solid waste in the animal control had letters of...
Sorry about that, Ms. Myers.
Notifications for no violations.
I had my own stuff on the back, but I didn't have nothing to do with it. That's right.
It quit raining.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Grimes is not here tonight, nor is Dr. Martin, so I'm gonna speak this evening, and kinda take it a little bit of a different turn on, just giving you some updates on the operations of our, of our, of our school division. You know, we were one of the twenty-four recipients of the Renew America School Grant across the country, and it was a labor of love to win that grant, but it's twelve million dollars of improvements to our schools. Finally, two weeks ago, started our first project with that grant, and, you know, there's no county funds going towards this. It's some state funds that we're using as a match, and then federal funds. So, it's really no funds coming from the county to be able to fund this, which is kinda nice, 'cause we know that there's a lot of capital needs across all aspects of the county. So, to be able to do these twelve million dollars in upgrades is very important for us. But just this week, we finished up our building envelope work, so sealing up our windows, where we're heating and air conditioning the outside instead of the inside, replacing insulation that was missing. Next week, we will actually start replacing the wooden doors at Crewe Primary School with much more secure doors, and then following that will be the intermediate school. So, the two schools that still had remaining wooden doors, those will, in a few weeks, no longer exist, and will actually have some very, much stronger, more secure doors in their place. So, that's super exciting. So, other projects we're gonna be doing just this calendar year with that is replacing all of our light fixtures in all of our schools with LED lighting. All in total, we will be potentially saving forty-five percent of our energy costs by the time we're done with this grant, which is huge. So, we look forward to being able to, you know, take those funds that we're saving and reallocate them to, you know, extra teaching positions or other instructional, or even other capital improvement needs that we have, so that we can try to, you know, keep working on those without having to come and ask for a whole lot of money to be able to do those. So, just to give you, you know, an update on kind of some of the things that are happening in the county with that, I'd also like to thank Mr. Bowen for getting rid of our junk vehicles in the backs of our property that were surplus, I don't know how many years ago. I appreciate the fact that those are now gone on our property, and thank you very much for that.
And let me say this, too. Boy, I haven't got that far yet, but Mr. Toth helped me with that tremendously to give me the right contact. There may be some funding coming back, and I thought maybe, since y'all have worked with us so much with the SOR officers, we could take some of that funds and earmark it for the equipment for the SRO officer, so... But anyway, so, 'cause it was, the buses, anyway, buses, y'all equipment, so I was trying to figure out a way, we're forming a good partnership, wanna keep that partnership.
We are, and, yes, I'd like to continue, continue that up, so we appreciate that. That's all I have for you all this evening.
Ms. Myers, just for clarification, 'cause, you know, somehow, some way, things get twisted around here, so I just wanna clarify, get clarif-- when you were talking about, maybe possibly with the renovations from, with the grant money, that some of y'all's funds may be freed up and reallocated back towards salary stuff, you're talking about the ongoing, the ongoing savings from the money, not the grant money?
Correct.
Right.
All the grant money will be spent. It's the savings that we'll save on, like, our utility bills, that will really be able to take those savings and reallocate, 'cause, you know, most of our utilities, that's paid with state and local funding, so being able to reallocate that to something else, you know, will be important, as we're all trying to, you know, conserve our money and use it to the best ability that we can, and make it really work for what we need it to.
Yes, ma'am. Did anybody have any question, Ms. Myers?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The building envelope work, do you think that was gonna help with the bats that we had this summer?
Well, so far, since we've sealed up the roof line around the complex, we have not seen any more. Now, I realize it's also getting colder, and they do migrate south, so the spring will really be our telltale that that has hopefully been resolved.
Great.
But we do hope that the money that we unfortunately had to spend on that was hopefully well worth it. So, we haven't had any complaints. I have not smelled them, and I have not seen them, so that's always a good thing.
That is good.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask her a question, please? We had our fan dance meeting the other day, and I wanna extend our appreciation to you for working for the, with the treasurer and Logan Presley on all the reconciliations. I know y'all spend a lot of hours doing that, and just wanted to know the status. They were saying they'd gotten up to October, and there's kind of an impasse. So, see where y'all were at with that, so they can proceed, since we've got an audit coming.
So, I actually need to reach out to Logan. I've had annual school report for the state due, so that's been kind of my focus. So, my goal is to actually reach out to her tomorrow, 'cause I think we're down to, like, literally, I don't think, maybe three hundred dollars to see. I know that on our end, some of the reports that we were providing to her actually weren't adding up, and we didn't realize it, and we now have been working with our accounting software company, and they know what transpired, 'cause they bought out the company that we were using, and they just switched us over to their platform, and somehow, somewhere in the background, things weren't adding up. The individual lines are all correct, but when you actually go down to the total, that was not what was adding, and of course, you know, we utilize our total lines quite a bit. So, we have been working with that, and I believe we've gotten Logan all the updated reports, now that most of that has been fixed. So, I think it's just figuring out those last few little things. I know October was, was wonky anyway, 'cause it was our first month of doing everything. We had a slight little hiccup with the first payroll that was processed, which was fixed, but I think just some of that back and forth, either some reports got missed that we didn't send, so we are working with them, and, you know, I've told Logan anything she needs, you know, I'll come up here and sit with her, and we'll, we'll get through it, but I do plan on reaching out to her tomorrow, now that I'm past the state report that had to get submitted, that we can finally get back on board with that and get them squared away, 'cause I know that we've got auditors coming back in November, so hopefully the rest of the months will move smoother than October, 'cause I know October was gonna be the one that was gonna be the struggle.
Thank you, because I don't think the general public realizes you have, you operate on a totally different operational system than we do with Bright, so your systems can't talk. So, it largely depends on the two different entities talking together.
Correct.
Even though all of the money is county money, it's still earmarked school money, but it's in two different systems, so...
Well, and I've been working on creating reports that look a lot more like what they're used to, because I do have the ability in our accounting system to actually create things and create reports. So, I've been working on trying to create reports that look a lot more like what Bright actually looks like. So, I think that'll actually help a little bit with just that information sharing, 'cause that way, if they're seeing something that is in a manner in which they're used to, it might help a little bit with just that, that information dissemination. We're also looking at, like, a centralized, whether it's like, you know, a Google Drive or a Box Drive, where we can put all of our reports so that, you know, Ms. Rayford and Logan and everybody else can have access to it whenever they need it, without having the back and forth with email. It can just be one central location, just so we can better that information sharing process.
I appreciate that, 'cause it's been a painful process.
It has.
But we've never had this building of relationships before and communication before that's much needed, so it's really helpful, and we appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Ladies, just for clarification again, I know we're in October. We're talking, just so the public can understand, we're talking the reconciliation for October of last year.
Twenty-third.
And moving forward. I just want that out there.
Thank you.
You have something?
Yes, I do. It was reported in the paper that y'all said that you had not received your sales tax proceeds.
Correct. Well, we have now. We received those from the treasurer on Tuesday.
I'm looking here, and the treasurer said, once the money was received, it was deposited into the school fund, and remains earmarked for the school. So, I don't like people saying the county is holding your money back.
Well, and that was not the intention.
That's the way it read.
Well, you know, the newspaper sometimes reports what they want. My intention in my report to the school board was just to give them an update on what was going on, the conversations between, you know, us and the treasurer, and trying to really hunker down on internal processes that will work for all parties, and trying to give them an update as to where that was at, and, you know, I just mentioned the fact that we had not received those funds, and I didn't know why we hadn't received those funds. You know, never meaning to say anything intentional, it was just, that's the fact. We hadn't received them, and we didn't know why.
Which fund were you looking in to see whether you received them?
So, it was the sales tax money. So, all the, currently, all of our state money goes directly to our bank account, with the exception of sales tax money. The sales tax money still goes to the county. So, we had not received that from the county. Typically, Ms. Rayford was pretty good about any money that she received that was earmarked for the school. She would transfer, you know, within a certain amount of time. It just, it had been two months, and we hadn't seen it, and we just didn't know why. Emails had gone unanswered.
Have you talked to Ms. Rayford about this?
I have not had a chance to talk to her, but multiple emails had been sent that just were not answered. So, it wasn't meaning to belittle anybody, it was just me being able to provide the information to our school board.
Well, some comments made during that meeting, y'all's meeting, that made it sound like we were holding your money back because of a cash flow problem.
Yeah, that, that one's, those were not my words.
If the money, if the money was collected on taxes, it's not up to the county to do anything with the money, other than put it in account earmarked for the school. Otherwise, you would be spending money that was collected. So, I guess it was taken out of context of, we have not received it, but it's still our money, and we're still earmarked that, and I got a question, in years past, when do you generally receive that money?
I mean, typically, so before we took over our funds, I mean, it would, I don't know where, what bank account it would sit out at the county, 'cause we never knew at any time how much really funds were there. But since we took over...
Which was when, when for the public?
We took over October one of last year.
Okay.
So, when we took over October one of last year and opened our own bank account, all the funds were going there, and...
I mean, specific, the sales tax funds.
Ms. Rayford, we get them twice a month. We get it on the, around the fifteenth and around the thirtieth of the month.
Of every month?
Two payments.
Every month?
Every month. And typically, you know, prior to this past, Ms. Rayford would transfer, you know, anytime, I mean, I could send an email saying, hey, you know, when are you gonna transfer? She'd respond back, no problems. I get that, you know, we've all been busy with, with, with audit, and the only thing I can think of as to why she had, just hadn't gotten to it, is I know we're gonna be accruing funds back to FY twenty-four. Two months of that is going to be sales tax, which, once we get that final number, I will have to come back to the board of supervisors and ask for that money to be carried over into FY twenty-five. So, I don't know if that was some of the reasons why, but it really, just my report the other night was just telling the board, you know, kind of where we're at with everything, 'cause that was a request that they had had, is just to know kind of, you know, where we were at with, with putting together some processes, and, you know, we've talked about putting an actual formal MOU together between us and the treasurer, as well as, you know, I think between us and the, you know, like, the county administration team with Logan, as far as just reporting money, finances, transfer of things, so that it's all written, we're all in agreement, and we all have something we can hold each other accountable for.
Is that, is that money specifically used for anything, the sales tax money?
It, it's part, I mean, it just...
I mean, did y'all need the money? Were y'all in a tight spot for the money?
We need it for payroll and for our...
So, it's kinda in a general?
It is.
Okay.
And I realize we have money in our bank account, but the money that we do have is earmarked for certain things. So, you know, when I budget every month, I know that I have this much in payroll, and this much in my general bills, which is utilities and all the basic stuff. So, I like to know that our basic aid that we get in the sales tax is gonna cover that, until we start getting the county money again, to kind of help bolster that a little bit.
What, anybody got a figure for the general public of what that sales tax amounts to?
Well, it varies.
Monthly?
It varies month to month.
Just depending.
Yeah, I know, depending what time of year it is and everything, but what about a twelve-month average?
I mean, I think we, it's, maybe averages about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and ninety thousand a month, just depending upon the sales for the, you know...
That's why I said twelve, yeah.
And I would like, go ahead, Bill.
As part of that MOU, it's my understanding that the school's not able to invest their funds in CDs and things like that?
We can.
You can?
We can. We are allowed to earn interest on our money. We're not allowed to be a for-profit entity. So, for the state, when you talk about, you know, you can earn interest, they need to see that that interest is being utilized for something, and not just...
If there's any money that the county would be holding that's earmarked for the schools, that's earning interest, that interest is still the school's.
Supposed to be, yes. Should be. I would hope that it would be.
Under the code of Virginia, yeah.
Should, should be, and are are two different things.
It is not under...
I can't speak for what occurred prior to October one of last year, 'cause there was a lot of, and, and I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, there was just a lot of unknowns that even us at the school division did not know prior to October one of last year, just because...
My concern is, in this current interest rate environment, where you've got the opportunity to add to your funds through interest rates, please do so.
We have actually been talking about that.
Part of the MOU, and, you know, if you want, the county, Tammy's been doing a good job, so please do that.
So, we, Dr. Grimes and myself have actually been talking about that, and I'm working on this MOU, 'cause... And I'm working on this MOU because Tammy has kind of let me take the lead on actually writing that and then we'll be back and forth over.
Have a little note.
Conversation on on that as far as what changes need to be made.
There's a one and a half million dollar CD, and this is one of the schools. It generated seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty days in interest over a three-month period. So that's a substantial amount of money that would help us and help you. So please proceed with any interest rates that you can get.
Well, and and board, also, because there's been this, trust will verify. That's that's all I'm saying. What, that the count, that the schools can't invest. They can't they can't get interest and stuff like that. So I I'd like to have Gary take a look at that, make sure that we're doing all that right, you know.
We we had actually reached out to VDOE and questioned that because it actually, it's a line item on our annual school report that we have to, that we have to provide, you know, what money we made interest-wise. I mean, it's it's an account line. We're just supposed to be not-for-profit. But there are school divisions who invest their money so that they can try to fund other things. So it's not that we can't. It's just, to be honest, prior to October one of last year, I don't know what was done with the school money when it was helped by the.
The interest rate, the interest rate environment is very different now than it was.
It is.
Two or three years ago when it was zero percent rate.
But since October one of last year, it should be pretty public known how much money was collected for the tax and how much money was paid to y'all. And you said you wasn't sure whether or not you received any interest off that money if the county did.
I mean, now, we've received interest on our bank account, which.
No, I mean, the money that's coming from the county for the for the tax.
Well, so I mean.
If the county collected a hundred and sixty thousand, you got a hundred and sixty thousand, you didn't get no interest.
Well, it's 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 sales tax that is actually issued from the state to the county.
Right.
So for the most part, it was transferred to our bank account, you know, within a couple of days. So, you know, you wouldn't have made much in the county's bank account. I'm not worried about that.
But it still needs to be every penny of it. If it's legally need to go to y'all, it needs to go to you and you need to know how much beyond you got, what we, than what we collected. No matter difference if it's five cents, because you need to make sure you got that. And we mean, we need to make sure we paid that.
That's right. So if I follow you correctly, if we got a hundred and sixty thousand dollar sales tax from the state and we got, I'm going to just do John math here, and there was a thousand dollars interest on it, they should get the hundred and sixty thousand plus the thousand dollars of interest.
That is correct.
As far as I'm concerned, as soon as the state money comes in, according to the treasurer, it goes to the schools. We don't have an opportunity to make interest on it.
Well, if it's even a couple of days at four percent or a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it'd be seventeen dollars.
But I don't think we got it in an interest-bearing account, is what I'm saying.
Well, that's the big question.
I don't think it is.
Yes, see, that I don't, I have no idea.
And if it's not, they're not doing it.
An interest-bearing account versus investment are two different things.
That's right.
But I did speak with the treasurer today and your money, when it is received by the county, it is earmarked for the school, whether it's in the county bank account or the school bank account. It is earmarked for the school and is not spent. However, there is a requirement, we're cheerful aware, that the school and the county have to reconcile every month. And you all, we've discussed the problem since October twenty three. It hadn't happened because there's, there's a lot of things, journal entries, voided checks, all that, that you have to share. And 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 now it looks like we're getting resolved, the two entities, separate systems, and also moving forward. You should be able to tackle that beast.
Correct.
And then reconcile each month.
Because of the way we change things, there was a lot of unknowns at the time about what reports were needed, what information was needed. We've now learned and that we now know. And and that's no fault of anybody. It's it's just, you know, we completely upended and changed things.
It's the beast itself.
It is.
And no one has ever gone to this depth before in this county. And and we're doing that for the citizens we serve.
Correct.
And the students we serve and all the people that are on the staff. And we appreciate your work. Y'all have spent, and I know from talking to Ms. Rayford and Ms. Presley, countless hours together that has never been done. And we're going to work it out once we get the system glitches and and all that. And I trust, I mean, you, are you a CPA?
I'm I'm not. Do you have my master's in accounting?
I mean, you know this this field, so does our people. And we know now how we should be working together and we're we're going to make that happen.
Correct.
But I want the general public to know that when the money comes in, it's a discretion, even though we've passed some want or policy, it's the discretion of the treasurer. But that money is for the schools. It's not that we're holding it for us to spend and she will transfer it over. But I think up until this point, it wasn't definitive things going on within each other's processes. And now you know the processes and you are communicating.
Which I think, once we have that MOU in place, where it really lays everything out on both sides, I think, you know, that'll be important for just, you know, just internal processes in general, just so that instead, you know, we can hold each other accountable for, you know, things that go on, you know, just so that we're all on the same page, we're all in agreement, and, you know, we can hit the ground running and and move forward in a very positive manner.
And I can't stress enough accountability because that's never been done before and we appreciate that.
I think a lot of information was withheld from the previous board, specific three or four years ago. You know, the board didn't really have no bite in the cake, so to speak. It was one person or two people that dictated what we as a board are doing and and that as the school board is doing that they're kind of working together on now that they didn't used to do.
Yeah, and and.
But it it's a whole lot easier for us to work on it amongst us and them to work on it with us amongst us in themselves than it is for us to be transparent through a newspaper. Because it kind of don't collide together very well. You know, I I know a policeman one time, he wrote a report and he had to read it four times to see if that was the same report he wrote that went into the newspaper, to see if it was the same criminal offense that he wrote the report on. I had a person call me and say, what, the county withholding money from the school? No, not in my awareness. Now, they could be, but I don't know nothing about it.
Well, the common denominator here is, and and I mean, any finances with the county is 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 well within our purview, but some of this stuff is getting us in the weeds. This letter that was sent today, and I want you to have his copy here, there are three items in here that concern me, but I I want you to have this copy of this. It starts with the first line, "The county did not hold back any of the sales tax proceeds." Said they want it all in their operational account, which is now over six million dollars. One of the other things says, "When reporting those discrepancies back to the school, we are still hitting the hitting the wall." That was sent today at two P M. I would say there needs to be some communication with the treasurer. Because again, like y'all said, it's the pleasure of the treasurer. And some of this stuff is getting us in the weeds and that right there is concerning as a response.
Well, and I said, I think, you know, a lot of what we're doing now as far as trying to get this agreement in place and trying to work with all this, really should have happened a year ago. Ms. Rayford was still new. You know, a lot of things were were very much up in the air and now we're having to backtrack on a lot of things. And yes, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there as well.
Well, I think I think you're right. I think y'all on the right channel here. Get that MOU in place and then if y'all have the expectation of getting that sales tax twice a month, you shouldn't have two-month gap. And I mean, you're well within your right to report that. So, I mean, it it is what it is.
Do you think, Ms. Meyer, that the real problem is we turn the money over to y'all?
No, I don't think that's the.
It seems to be.
I don't think that's the problem. To be honest, I think it's just the fact that when it happened, there was a lot of turmoil and there just were not enough processes put in place at the time on on all accounts. I think it's, it can work and it will work. It's just we've got to have better internal written, internal processes.
Well, I think, Mr. Bowen, you said that you spoke to other super, other administrators. Nobody around here does that.
It it is.
And I think we've made a big mistake in doing it.
It it is unique to to this area. We are not the only county in the state that does it, but it is unique to this this area. But it 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 just, we need better internal written processes and it needs to be agreed upon, you know, between all parties involved and not just one-sided. And I mean, I'm saying that it it can't be just what the school division wants. It can't be just what, you know, Ms. Presley wants. It can't be what, I mean, we all have to agree because we all have to work together. And I think that's the biggest and most important thing. It's just us having those continued conversations to get to a point. And I know that Ms. Rayford and I had originally kind of set like an October thirty first deadline, but with us still trying to help get everything reconciled, it's probably going to be closer to sometime in November when we get that, you know, first draft for her and I to really sit down and go through and hunker through and and, you know, and yeah, there's there's probably going to be some process changes. It's just what those are going to be, I don't know right now.
With to Mr. Ingram's point here, Steve, if you don't mind, could could there be a quick conversation, even as quick as tomorrow, that between the treasurer and the school, there's an agreed upon time when this MOU is in place to rectify some of those concerns?
You know, the biggest problem I see is that the treasurer is a constitutional officer and she is supposed to, or he or she is supposed to control the funds of the county. And right now, he or she is not able to do that. And that's that's bad.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't like to, I wouldn't like to say this now, and I I won't part of that conversation, but I do communicate really weekly with the board chairman, the school board chairman. And he did tell me that he went over there to talk to the treasurer to release the sales tax. Now, I won't part of that conversation, but I don't think he he didn't make that up. So I don't know, you know, I don't know why county did not hold back. I don't, but I don't know what hold back means. It's hold back three days, hold back. I don't, I don't know what that means. But anyway, because I didn't, and I'm I'm still, and that's a learning curve for me too.
The chairman would like to speak, Mr. Chairman of the school board, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. But but let me say this, though. Let me say this. My conversations with Ms. Meyer and and Ms. Ms. Presley is when the mistakes are made, they, and I heard you, I heard that Ms. Abbott said today, they own it.
We did.
Okay, they own it.
We haven't done any of this.
And and that's that's a good sign, okay? I'm not saying everything's done right, but they owning it. So, anyway.
And I think this open discussion, so the public can hear this.
It's very healthy.
It's very healthy and very, very informative.
Because it's not my money and I'm not going to hide anything. So I do think it's important and I think the continued conversations will be just as important.
I think the treasurer needs to be involved in these open conversations.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't need to be filtered through the board. The treasurer is, like you said, duly elected. They answer to the citizens, but they also need to answer for these issues like this. We can't sit here and get in the weeds for that. But, you know, it's being thrown in our laps and what does it do when it gets more government? Slows down. So, but thank you, Ms. Meyer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Abbott, real brief, did you have some, real brief?
Just one, one simple point.
Yes, sir.
I went to the treasurer with the authority of the board.
School board.
The school board and asked the treasurer, why was there a problem in releasing funds that were earmarked for the school? Her comment to me was, and I'll try to be as clear and as focused as I was, she said at the time, you have four million dollars in the bank, do you need the money? My response to her was, I don't know how much is in the bank. That's not my area of responsibility. I'd like to know, is there a problem? The tax money was from July and August. This was October. And then she told me how she'd been away at training and so on and so forth and that she would have the money transferred this coming, the next Tuesday.
Ms. Abbott, to your point, how how long ago was that? You had that conversation?
Went Tuesday.
I don't know. I went in and shared it with your county administrator.
You're saying, so within a week today?
It was this week.
This week?
And it jumped from four million to six million?
There you go, exactly where I was going.
Only this week?
All I know is that, what I do know is the debt burden on the school system is slightly over two million dollars a month. Slightly over two million dollars a month. The school's budget is considerably larger than the county's budget.
Okay. Thank you for.
I have all the faith and confidence in this young lady that she's handling those funds correctly. We do not have a reserve. So we have to have the money in hand to be able to pay our duty, our our debt responsibilities.
Okay.
Dave Ramsey said it needs six months and I think y'all got, what, three months, six million, two million a month? Yeah, y'all got three months. Working on it. That's good, Ms. Abbott.
Well, there are monies, there are monies set aside. I call it buildings and grounds. They have another name for it. But there's a million or so dollars in that in the event there is an an emergency in one of those buildings. If you lose an H vac system or something like that and it costs thousands of dollars to repair, there has to be money available. So there are funds set aside for those kinds of things. But the average debt load, I mean, the month to month, we have to make payroll and pay the bills, that's about slightly over two million dollars a month.
You're saying debt load, but you mean operational expense.
Correct. Operational expenses is the debt load. Now.
But that's not really debt loads, just for clarification to the citizens. It's not debt load, it's operational expenses. It's two different things.
Recurring.
Right.
Recurring.
You're not servicing a debt with that money.
Correct. It's, well, I I consider it a debt when you owe somebody some money.
All right. You don't owe them till they perform the work, so you don't owe it in early.
I'm not an accountant, don't claim to be one.
Neither do I.
I was the one, I and I said it when I stood up at that rostrum. I was the one that said about the cash flow or the funding that you brought up, Mr. Abbott. I was the one who said that. I said it was a mistake. The treasurer was the one that sat on the money. They held the money. And the only way I can count hold it is here in the county. Now, okay, I'll separate those comments out in the future. The treasurer held the money however she can hold it. When?
Under the Code of Virginia.
That Code of Virginia that you're, that you quoted here a little bit ago says earmarked money in the schools, according to the auditors, is supposed to be transferred within a very reasonable period of time. July, August to October, I don't believe is reasonable. I'll sit back down, but thank you for allowing me.
All right. All right. Y'all got the rest of the stuff in your board packages here. Was there anything y'all had for Greg or Mr. Collins on the?
Yeah, so planning and economic development, Mr.?
Yeah, very briefly, because I know y'all want to give a quick question. Basically, in September.
We want to go eat and watch football games. No, I'm kidding.
Go eat, I want to be at the football game.
But we submitted the electronic vehicle grant and we still hadn't heard a word from the U.S. Department of Transportation regarding the status of that grant, but we did submit it. And I, as I mentioned to Mr. Collins earlier, I just want to compliment the town of Blackstone as well through the three entities together, I think did a fantastic job. So we're all about teamwork here.
Good deal.
Secondly, on the fifth of September, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Bowman and I met with, lack of a better term, procurement data center sites because that was discussed at our July meeting and Lucy Cook, and it wasn't Lloyd, but another representative from S C C was there as well as L R A folks. And we discussed what it takes from, for infrastructure to service a data center.
Right.
And that's reflected in the minutes I sat out today for the E D C meeting.
Yes, sir.
Two other points. We do have an economic development committee meeting next Thursday. And I put a couple of items on the agenda with the blessing of the chair. And then we do have a work session to discuss solar. We we discussed this Tuesday night at the planning commission meeting. Since I have no items on the agenda for the planning commission to hear, we're tentatively scheduling it for the fourteenth, which would be y'all's next work session, a joint.
So that that work session will be just nothing but soul?
Well, yeah, right.
But that's all I had. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Mr. Collins, do you have anything to say from the Piedmont Regional Jail Authority?
I had a meeting yesterday, a hundred and ninety-four federal inmates. So it's a, it's a positive for the member counties. And the new locks are finished, which was part of the upgrade from the jailbreak. And then the new security cameras are going in and the new touch fence, which I'm not sure how it's going to work with deer and squirrels and all that.
You make sure it works.
Our fence is going to be monitored. So they're working, that's the next project. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would you slow the bus down just a little bit for me here? We skipped something, but that's okay. On the, on the planning, on the Piedmont Regional Jail, I would ask if I I need Ms. Presley as an alternate to go to meetings. We had done that for the previous.
Got you.
And 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 that's the motion if somebody would 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 please.
Make a motion that Logan Presley be the alternate for the regional jail.
Can I get, all right, all in favor, six and five, I'm saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, there you go.
All right, back in the bus up, sir, if you don't mind, for emergency services. Buddy, Buddy, of course, is not here. You got your report in front of him. But if you go to the third page, that's pass-through money. I need to get that motion, the suggestion motion passed so we can give the money to emergency services. If you look at the third page, I appreciate if you could get that one for me. But he, Mr. 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 Hyde would have been here today and he didn't mind telling his business. He went to a wedding and he come back with COVID as a gift.
I thought you were going to tell me he come back, no, I. I thought you were going to tell me he come back. Nevermind.
I, I thought the same thing.
Third page, I'm sorry, would be G10?
All right. It would be, um, I need a motion to approve the, um, request as presented for the authorization of equal distribution of the FY25 Virginia Department of Fire Programs Aid to Localities Funding to the three volunteer fire departments in Nottawa County. That would be the motion if someone would like to make.
I'll make that motion in the amount of $16,418.60 to the three aforementioned volunteer fire departments.
Second.
That's a motion.
Can I get a second? All right. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? I didn't think so. All right. Um, never, huh?
LRA. I just want to make sure you, I didn't know you rolling. I was scared you were going to leave me again.
I am. I am. So, so yes, go ahead.
All right. So Mr. Collins and Mr. Toth or some, all, all y'all have to ask about the LRA expenses.
Well, you can't give us the income and not tell us what he's spending.
I know it. I see what you're going. So Andrea, do they have this in front of them?
I looked at it.
Okay. So, so just quick, quick math. We don't have to, I'm going to give you some examples. I, we did a quick math this evening. You take the LRA lodge, for example, and, and the expenditures was $32,446, $446. And revenue was $40,339. So we come ahead. But let me give you a quick, and all we did was three months, July, July, August, and September. The LRA campground, all right, we make money on that. Revenue was lower than $14,000. Expenditures $5,000, lower than $5,000, profit about $8,000. Some of this shocking if you really take those numbers and look at them. But I'm, we're going to give you a spreadsheet in the future, something you can study. And you're right. Uh, where is the, where is the officers' club? That's the shocker.
That's about the third one. Third paper, fourth paper, something like that.
Yeah, I saw that thing.
We'll have to not-
I'm, I need to get you a spreadsheet. These numbers are not, it's hard to follow what, the way we got set up.
Page five.
Yeah, page five.
12, 9, 4.
Yeah, officers' club, July, the, the revenue was $3,664, expenditures $5,167. And basically, in three months' time, we lost $1,500. In other words, about $500 a month. And so, you know, that, and the problem is, you can't just turn the air conditioner off in the area because you've got that historical, um, drawn painting on the, and that's the things with, and, and, and-
Your fixed cost.
Right. But anyway, so what I thought, what would help, I think, if we, when we, what we want to try to do is, as y'all, give me the directions. Steve, stop the bleeding. So what I'm going to have to do is break it out to see what's making money, what's not, give you a spreadsheet. And then I got to get in the weeds of it to find out, are we spending too much in contract work? It, it, is, do we, I don't know. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta take a strong look at-
What's the rental?
We're on the brink of not calling- The first place you go is the rent, is when we talked to the-
Yeah. What's the rental on, what's the rental on the officers' club?
Um-
Per event. I think it's per event. That-
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that-
I don't think it was-
You don't know how much it is?
It was like $200.
I thought it was like $250 or $300 at the most.
Is it, is it-
That's way too low.
Oh, it is.
So, I mean, that's what we got to, I mean, that's, that's what I got to break down. I got it. Right. All right.
But we on the brink of not calling to the LRA anymore anyway.
That's way too low.
Yeah, that's right. And that's another thing. It's almost, right, we, we don't even have to call it LRA. We can call it the, whatever we want to call it. Right now, we call it, we're losing money.
It's Nottawa County's Officers Club.
Well, I mean, rental is, is ridiculous. Any, if you rent-
Any venue.
Any venue around here is going to be anywhere from $500 to $1,000.
Exactly right.
Easy.
Or more.
Of that magnitude, they got a little, couple of things in the county that is way cheap and they working on fixing that too, because I didn't cash flowing for them neither. And I think the bell front, and I don't sit on that board, but I think the bell front range is one of them.
And rentals for businesses, I'm sorry, I, I appreciate all of them out there. I see one of them out here. It's $150. I'm paying more than that for a space half the size.
A storage building is more than that.
The, uh, the small business, Ecombator, the revenue was like 19, lower than $1,900. They keep the, you know, it's a central air system. The expenditures was $2,200. We went, I mean, we went in a hole in three months. I mean, it just, it just keeps on. And so I, my task, I got it, we, it's data, it's going to be data driven. We got, and let me back up by the officers' club. I was told this, the reason why that, that it was as cheap as this is because some people in the county can't afford, you know, some wedding venues are $5,000, $10,000, $15,000.
Oh, yeah.
And it just goes up. And that's, but, but what, what was right in 1990 is, is not right in 2024. So I-
Our, our goal is to stop losses. We don't, when we do the budget, we don't tell the citizens of this county that you paid for somebody's wedding.
That's right.
We broke even. That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Let's break even, but don't lose.
Yeah. Like y'all said, you know, $500 to $1,000 is kind of a going rate for a small venue, but then if they turn the electricity on, it doubles.
Oh, yeah. That's the whole thing. You got to keep it on all the time, too.
I, I, I think that y'all made a very good point about, hey, Steve, stop showing me revenue, showing me expenditures, and there's a problem now. So you'll see better spreadsheets in the future and we'll have more discussions and that'll be part of some of our work sessions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Good.
All right. Constitutional office, Sheriff, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, he does, because I'm part of him.
We got it right here in front of us, I think.
Well, first of all, Bia Budd is not here tonight. I'm just going to speak on the radio system real quick. We have started to move forward with it. Started Monday. We're going to have the first kickoff meeting, which is getting us started on it. That's a good thing. Again, like I said, two years of hard work by all our men and women here, and we're here.
Hey you.
And then second, I just want to speak, this Sunday, we are having our softball tournament, our annual third annual softball tournament. We raised money for Shop With Cops. Last year we were able to take 13 kids out Christmas shopping. It's a good thing. The community's been real involved. They've been donating a lot of stuff to it. And I just want to thank them publicly. And again, y'all come on out Sunday and let's have a little fun. And the trophy right now, unfortunately, is in Prince Edward. We're going to try to get back in Nottawa this year.
Yeah, get that thing back in.
Need to ring her. I'm your guy.
Time and place.
Uh, it's going to be Sunday, October 27th, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We got five teams in the tournament. And like I said, come on out.
And it's going to be where, Sheriff?
Um, it's going to be at Regalsworth in Blackstone.
Okay, got you.
Again, we got vendors, everything else. So come on out and bring the family and enjoy yourself. Uh, I think that's pretty much all I had at this point.
All right. If you hang right there, a couple, a couple things. Buddy also had mentioned to me that a lot of the fire departments have been giving, I'll say a lot of them, I don't know exactly the number, but have been giving, helping the victims with the hurricane victims. And they're going to talk about, soon about the equipment that they have given out to help in that thing. Fred Circle, the, the Swissress guy, he, he called today and I tried to contact, get connected with Joey Scheneff, but he's trying to give bells of, hey, for farmers out there too. So I want y'all to be aware of that. If you're looking, not only your package, but the sheriff, all I'm asking, this, this is, I appreciate, by the way, Michelle Graham will go toe to toe with you in a heartbeat, and I respect that. I, I, you know, she's hard to love, she's hard to love sometimes, but she said I'm hard to love too. So, but what I, we, they, they put in for a grant, the sheriff's department put in a grant for the six SRO officer. And the reason behind that, and sheriff can chime in on that, it, it helps because you've got five schools. If he has to pull an officer, somebody is, is without.
Somebody's taking a class, somebody's sick.
Somebody's taking a class, something like that. Originally, Dr. Grimes, and she told me, she said, this is a reasonable request. Originally, we, they were going to pay us 100, I mean, they were going to take care of the SRO officers and it was 125 some thousand dollars. Okay.
They were going to pay the match.
Logan caught me and said, hey, Steve, that's for six, only five. So, and, and the school did exactly what they said they would do. They paid $101,000 for the five. So they paid the price for the SRO officers this fiscal year. The question asked coming up for the sixth one. And because it's been approved-
The grant has been approved.
But, but here's the, here's the, here's the glitch. I talked to Dr. Grimes and Dr. Grimes says, hey, Steve, it's a reasonable request, but I, I got to, Heather and I got to look at the money. I said, can y'all pay the $23,084? And she goes, well, you know, let me have, I got to have more, we got a lot of other needs right now. Let me have some conversations. And I said, well, I, what I'm asking the board, would, and here's the other thing. When you bring in officers, they're going to need another vehicle. So if you look at that letter at the bottom, $54,000, that's the, that's the part that nothing covered. So I'm asking the board, can we table it another month? And, and so because the, the grant people want to know, what's the intentions of the county? And my thought was, I said, Michelle, can we table it for another month or up to December? Would that be a good answer for them after the board is consensus, not asking for a vote? And that gives me a little more time to see the budget. You know, he's, the sheriff has saved money because they had frozen positions. I got to take a look at it. Can we figure out how we can get to $54,000 for the vehicle?
What was your response when you asked her that? Of waiting till December, table it to there?
Oh, Michelle just wants to-
Yeah. We, we, we have to actually submit something to them that we're doing something with this grant.
Right.
And at this point, like I said, they, they understand it takes time to hire officers, find people and get people in position.
You want a motion, Steve?
No, you don't need a motion.
No, I don't think, there's any consensus to say, would you table at least and put it, and it would be considered maybe in November or December?
Yeah, tell them that-
I think that'd be fine.
Yeah.
But I'll be okay with that. Okay.
Yeah, I think-
So Michelle-
Just for budget, for budget work, just to see where you are.
Yes, sir.
But I think, um, and Dr. Grimes talked today with him today. I see what the sheriff is trying to do. He, he had, he doesn't want to leave a school empty. I mean, that's just where it is anyway. And so six SR, six SRO officers with five schools, you kind of figured out.
Well, I think it's fair to, in that request, to say that we should have this ready for action either in November or December's meeting.
Right. And that's why, this is why I say too, like if I get some, if we get funds back from, you know, junk or something, because we couldn't, we had to, we had to sell the metal, I, I want to put it towards this, towards another vehicle. You see what I'm thinking about, or, or equipment or something like that. But anyway, that's, that's, that's where it stands. So I, I would appreciate y'all doing that. And it sounds like that's what, that's the answer we needed tonight.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right. I want your new, to unfinished business here, the animal shelter update.
Uh, I guess that would be me. Um, we, the, the new update is, we had a meeting with the architect and the ad hoc committee from the CARES group to see some of the, the ideas. And we had the meeting Tuesday, October 15th. And it was a very productive meeting for the CARES group. It was Ms. Elze, Ms. Wilkerson, and Dr. Carr, and of course, Jack Bosel. We looked at, and of course, Mike Gentry was there. And we were trying to figure out, you know, where to put the bathroom so you don't cut so much concrete, the engineering part, but get it on the floor. So that meeting went real well. They, they have, and I don't see anything wrong with it. The board's okay with it. I'm not, I'm not asking for a vote, but I just want to see how you feel. We, we talked about possibly having the, the rabies clinic there so that, so the public can get, get an idea, hey, this is where the new animal shelter is going to be.
That's a good idea.
Kind of thing.
Good idea.
And, and, and insurance, I checked on that. Everything will be covered on that. But they, they talked about doing it in the deer season when it starts, because hunters will come up there and it's, and it's right there in the country there. And people can pull up in the trucks. So Dr. Carr said, we like to move forward. The problem is that I'm trying to check with the treasurer to make sure that she can assist with that because she has to give out the dog tags while they're there. But, and, and hopefully, she, she had a hard time getting a good cell signal, but I think you can write it on paper, baby. I don't know. And then she could put it in a computer when she got back to the office. I don't know. I just feel like that's a good idea. And they are, they are keeping, they're still on fundraising. There's a, you see that in your package, a 50-
Your library has a, has those little hotspots.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I know. That's what, I mentioned that to you. You can do a hotspot. People do it on the phone. My wife does it all the time.
Yeah.
And, um, so, so we might be looking for that in the future. I kind of stuck my foot in my mouth. They, they had some cages up there, you know, that we bought to see if we could utilize them. They said, what are we going to do with these cages? And I said, well, y'all can do a fundraiser, like lock somebody up in there for so many hours and, and-
What they do in Lunenburg.
Yeah. And I said, I would pay to see Celia Elze locked up in there for an hour or two. And I probably should have said that out loud, so that might come back and haunt me. I might be spending time in that darn thing. But anyway, that's, that's pretty much update.
Do they like the kennels?
Yeah. But the, so left that out. So I spoke with the, I called the state vet office and I got a contact and the lady says, hey, Steve, you tell me what you want. I'm not going to tell you how you build it, but, but I said, but would you at least look at the plans? Because I don't want to build something. And then they come in and say, well, that's not going to work. Just for instance, I'm talking about like the sick room. It's got to be, if, if the animals face each other, they got to have a four foot distance. You got to have at least four foot distance. If don't, it's not going to work. Or you can only have one, only one wall for sick animals. That, that kind of thing. And so she, so I'm bringing her in to, to, once I get the, the draft, you know, when we get a little closer, how are we going to draw this thing up? And, and let her look at that plan and see what the next step is going to be. So to make sure we okay. Who did you ask me, Bill? I went on a tangent.
The Cumberland, the kennel, the kennel.
Oh, oh, so example, that, he, he prefers the block wall between them. And, and-
Dr. Carr does too.
Dr. Carr does too. And so, um, if they're cleaning and if, if you're a sick, I don't know why I'm looking at you calling you a sick dog. You're my boss. So I look over this way. So-
So we the sick dog.
If you clean it up after a sick dog.
Right. And if he sees sprays on the other one, it's, they contaminate it. It's, it's stuff that I didn't know, Bill. I mean, and I'm learning.
Well, that's why we're checking. So, so that's not resolved, is to have a go-
No.
Put the barrier between.
But they even mentioned about, yeah, they, but they, they mentioned about, you know, some people might donate a, a cage or room.
I want that part of your question too. Are the cages, are they acceptable?
The cages is acceptable for an animal, like if you, if you unload an animal, but for the animal to stay there, they don't, he believes you need a wall, a block wall in between them. And so I, I don't think it's going, in other words, you got a wall then a cage, then you got stuff you got to clean in between. I think we're going to have to have a cage. Like I might could be able to use the door on the block wall, maybe part of it. So I'll see what I can do on that part. But I was disappointed in that.
And that wasn't a resolution then. So, okay.
But anyway, but we'll, we'll do what we can.
I would like to say, I got an email from Ms. Elze yesterday.
Uh-oh.
Well, no, it's, it's a good email.
Okay.
The over $535,000 that they've raised, and this is still in effect. And I don't know, dollar for dollar, up to $50,000, it'll be matched. So anything you give, if you give $20, it's going to be $40. So it's a, it's a great opportunity to help, you know, get this thing going. And they're keeping a record of what's being done during the time, September 1st to January 15th of 2025. So whatever's donated during that time is going to be matched, up to $50,000. So.
Good deal.
They're doing their part.
They're doing their part. And we, and we're keeping them at the table. We're keeping that relationship, Mr. Chairman, as you had asked, to make sure that's done. All right.
All right. The Davenport lease purchase agreement.
Yeah. If you look in your package under I2, yeah. And if you go to page four, that's pretty, I just, I got that there for your information. Mr. Chairman, I'm going, I'm going to have to sign some papers tomorrow and he needs the chairman to be signed. So is it okay if I come to your business tomorrow to get you some ba-
Bring your wallet.
Bring my wallet. I got you. In other words, we got to buy something. I'll get you. But anyway, if you look at it, if it has six, June 30th, 2026, that's going to be the end time to make a payment of five, over half a million dollars. Okay? So that kind of shows you the debt.
Yeah. According to someone, they got extra money with the school. Did I say that out loud?
But I want to thank Mr. Collins, who helped me with assisting with that, because his bank, um, business, his background was very helpful in, in, in having negotiations and conversations. I appreciate you, Mr. Collins, I didn't mean to call you a sick dog a few minutes ago, I apologize to you. All right.
All right, the real estate tax abatement program.
All right, there it is. It's in front of you again, and I'm asking for a motion approved, that first, and the next one second, we'll get that, we'll get that in there.
All right, y'all, if y'all, we can, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the, uh, abatement of tax for the renovation or demolition of derelict buildings as presented in I three. Hello? Is it me you're looking for?
Yeah, right.
Somebody gonna make that motion, or we gonna move on?
I'll say move, make that motion.
All right, can I get a second?
Second for discussion.
All right, we got a second on the grant, uh, on the motion for discussion. What you got, Mr.?
We don't have an employee that is a real estate assessor, I brought this up last month.
How we gonna word it, Mr. Collins?
First paragraph.
Yep.
Inspector? We have an inspector.
Not assessor, you want to change that to strike the word assessor to inspector?
Okay.
Make an inspection of the derelict building. That's all I've got.
Okay, so the property-
Apologize, sir.
So, Nottaway County Code of Ordinance, the property owner may request a real estate inspector make an assessment of the derelict building. That's in-
You want assessment or inspection?
You want inspection, right? Inspector.
Well, it has to be an assessor to determine fair market value, because that's the following, it says, real estate assessor shall reflect the fair market value.
Well, if you make an assessment-
We don't have somebody that works for the county that does that.
But, but, but the problem with what you're saying, and Gary, you're here, I'm telling you, you pulled it right out of state code, the way I understand, that's what we said in the work session, right?
Verbatim.
It's verbatim, so, and we don't have one, so that, I-
Could we change it to building inspector?
But an assessor, an assessor could be an employee of the county to assess the problem, to assess the situation.
You're gonna have to designate an assessor.
All right, well, let me ask, all right, yeah, let me ask you this then. Gary, um, bear with me on this one here. So, we, we leave, leave the wording as it said, uh, the real estate assessor make an assessment of the derelict building. Can the county, at its discretion, uh, do an RFP for assessors?
On a part-time basis?
No, just, in other words, let's say you get twenty buildings, and then we put it out in RFP.
Oh, okay, to do them all.
Do it as such, as such, from that way.
You could, the only issue I can see with that is that I don't know if twenty are gonna come up at the same time.
Right. I mean, I get that, and what I'm saying is because-
If it's two.
Yeah, if it's two, you know-
Or, you know, what, what would a fee be that somebody would offer to be our assessor for an individual structure?
Yeah, and see, and see, we can put that RFP out there anytime.
And the assessor would need to be, obviously, somebody-
Kind of, kind of like we did, um, real estate value. Kind of like we did Mr. Simmons over there with the real estate.
Right.
Okay, so leave the wording the same?
We can leave the wording the same, just know that we have to address that.
Okay, yep.
Well, that, and that's why, but, but we just wanted to clarify, the reason why nothing was changed is because it was out of the state code of Virginia, and so we can't just change it.
Right.
All right, well, do you want your mo, your, your second to stand?
I would draw the second for discussion and just make a second.
All right. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? There you have it, moving on to I four.
So, I need to get a RFP for an assessor.
Yep.
Okay.
It's, it's an individual structure based.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like an appraiser's four hundred dollars or five hundred dollars.
Continue utilizing them throughout the year or something like that.
Yeah, you can do it for twelve months, your first one, or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so I four, the blighted ordinance, okay? And let's see here, there wasn't a suggested motion on here, I believe, no. All right, but board members, we need a motion, um, to approve the abatement of derelict buildings and blighted buildings as presented in your package in I four.
I, well, we need to have a discussion on it, if we're gonna discuss on it, don't we?
You can do it either way.
I'll make a motion to have a discuss, discussion on it.
Oh, you don't need a motion for discussion?
Don't, okay, so, in our work session last week, we talked about this right much in depth. And I read over this, uh, a couple of different times, and I saw, I think we, I thought, I thought during our work discuss, during our work session discussion, we said that we weren't gonna take much action on this until, uh, November, is that what we said? Did we not say that?
I don't know.
It was a whole lot of gray areas in this. Gary, you was there, you, attorneys tend to remember things more than-
I, I honestly thought y'all were taking it up tonight.
You're right.
I did, too.
Was we taking it up tonight, but it was a lot of gray areas in there that we was gonna kind of-
But that was what we were sending to him. If we didn't send him anything, then he didn't add or-
He didn't add or take out anything.
As I understood it, and correct me if I'm wrong, at the work session, you said, this is kind of gonna be at the discretion of the board of supervisors, the, with the cares bite, so forth and so on, is that right?
Well, he said we had a lot of leeway.
Right.
Correct, correct. I think what we talked about was, for example, like a fallen down tobacco barn.
Right.
Is not likely to be something that we declare as a blighted building.
Right.
I recall you said we could amend it later on.
You can, as long as the amendment complies with state code.
State code, yeah. It, it's, it's fluid to, up to that, yes.
Right, and in a, in a building or a house, perhaps, that's been vacant for X amount of years, same thing as old tobacco barn, has fallen down, and there you can see it because somebody harvested the, the timber off of it. I still think we need, we need to have that in here before we vote on it.
But that's, that's not parallel on what state code?
It can be, though, he said.
What we could-
But that's the leeway he was talking about, that the county has that leeway, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'd have to look into this, and obviously, this isn't gonna happen tonight, but I, I don't, I mean, the county could probably come up with a definition of what constitutes a blighted building.
There you go.
That's what we were looking for.
So, we can add that definition and adopt that to this.
I think, you know, my, my feeling is this, if you got a, like you're talking about, Bo, a house that's fallen down or whatever, as long as it's not a nuisance, and it's not an endangerment to the public, and somebody's got a posted sign up there, to me, we don't have to declare it blight. If they're, if they're taking care of it from a fan point of, they're trying to keep people off of it.
Right.
And it's not accessible-
It depends on the locality, too.
Exactly.
Because it could be an eyesore if it's right next to your place.
Right. But still, I mean-
Bill and I talked about that, if it's an eyesore, there's one right on Old Richmond Road, we've had discussions with the citizen that owns the land all around it, something should be done with that. It looks awful. But I think it should be some language mentioned there, if it's, if it's over, ever how many years vacant, then it does not qualify for this. If it's over fifteen years vacant, or whatever y'all want to talk about, I think we need to, I think it's, much more discussion needs to take place on this, before we, before we vote on it. That's my opinion. And, and I hear you saying, we can still do it and make amendments to it, but why not let's try to get it right to start with, before we gotta go to add amendments to it?
So, you'd like at a work session to have a definition of what we will declare blighted?
Yes, sir. Don't you think?
Similar Blackstone is, you can see the interior from the exterior.
Exactly, that was mentioned.
That's a pretty clear indication.
And if that's been, and if it's been vacant for fifteen years, and nobody, because it's gonna go on a, on a complaint basis anyway. But you're gonna have some people complaining on, on certain pieces, and some people, and they say, if you make him do that, then why don't she have to do this over here? So, I think if it's been vacant for fifteen years, or ten years, or whatever we talk about, and y'all decide that you want to do, we go with it.
You'd have to make a motion to table.
Right, for, for next time.
Is that correct?
Um, since it's on the agenda, right?
Well-
So, so the things I heard tonight, let me make sure I understand this right, if it's twenty-five, if we say over twenty-five years old, it's not being listed blight?
Unarched.
Been vacant? Been, I, I don't know how, see what I'm saying?
My point is, I, I-
Well, how do you, how do you determine if it's been vacant?
Right.
Yeah, my, my interpretation of this is, if it's a danger to the public, if it's, uh, uh-
Meth house.
Health and safety.
Well, that's a danger to the public, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
If it's a danger to the public, and it's not being, uh, properly signage or whatever to keep the public off of it, then it becomes-
What about the eyesore part? How do we address that?
I really don't think you could, I mean, what sort of your eyes might not be sort of mine, and that's the problem you're gonna run into.
That's what I'm talking about, so, but if it's been vacant for fifteen years, and the house has had fallen down, then the, the neighbor says, well, I want that thing cleaned up, and say, no, that place has been like that for thirty years, why you clean that up?
You know, I, I think, again, you, he's gotta show that there's a danger to the public.
He got a sign up, can't go on it, still look terrible.
You know, it's gotta, it's gotta, to me, that's my definition. If somebody's got a piece of property that is, is dangerous, and it's, uh, you know, eyesore, like I said, eyesore to you might not be eyesore to me.
Yeah, but we, we had recent discussion, Bill and I did, and I don't know whether that house is in your district or mine, it's close to either way, but, uh, it's in our county.
That's your side.
So, so this, this resident came up to us, actually a resident of Crewe, that owns some land close to it, this house has been vacant, I'm gonna say for three to six years. It's got six-inch trees growing up against the house, four to six-inch trees. It's just in close proximity.
That people have been going in there?
Yeah, people have been going-
Well, that's the thing.
But if you put a no trespassing sign, say, oh, yeah, they ain't supposed to go in there, so if the roof fell on the head, but it looks terrible to the neighbors. And that's one that would rightfully so say, this is an eyesore, it's on the highway, the trees are pushing up the roof on it, and I don't want to build a house across the road by that forty thousand dollar, five-acre lot, because I'm gonna be looking directly across the road at that house. In that case, something ought to be done.
Though, I understand your, your position on this, but I think let's just cut to the chase, look at one dash four from B to G, it talks about drug blight, and that is what we're trying to attack, is the drug blight. Because everybody knows, the sheriff knows, that we have a huge drug problem here, and unless we get some teeth, and what he's trying to enforce, this will help fight the drug blight. It isn't about old, old house with trees growing up, it's about the people that are inhabited.
This specific section isn't about the old, old house with trees, but the majority of the rest of it is.
Gary, can I ask you a question? Do, do, are you aware if, does, is anything in the state code, since we're mirroring that, is there anything to address, uh, Mr. Toad's concerns, as far as definitions and stuff like that?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, we can go back and check, but as far as I recall from when we drafted the ordinance, it's, it's pretty general and open-ended. Now, what I think that means is that the locality could put some restrictions of its own in there, you know, but anytime you put restrictions, you want to make sure that they're capable of being defended if anybody challenges them.
Right.
You know, and, and, you know, respectfully, I, I kind of agree with Mr. Bowen on that issue of, you know, I, I'm a little reluctant to consider timelines, because that's a, I, I don't know how long it's been since somebody lived in there, or, you know, if you say, been vacant for fifteen years, well-
Well, we can go by the last time they had electricity to the property. You know, that's one way of doing it, one of many ways.
I, I just want to-
But it's, it's extra work, added work that may not need to take place, but it's gotta be some kind of way to saying, that house that, we didn't know that was there when that timber was cut, now that we can visually see it, if that property owner has to acquire a cost of turning it down, that's not right, that house been empty for fifty years, and now, just because you can see it, you got a problem with it.
You know, I mean, I, I will say, I, if we're gonna create definitions, we certainly want to make them airtight. If you leave it a little bit open-ended, you know, taking that example.
You're taking, talking case by case when you say open-ended.
I can tell you, as, as, if you came to me in my capacity as county attorney, and said, there's an old farmhouse back there that we didn't realize was, was there until somebody cut the timber, and there's never been any report of any problem, there, it's, there's no indication from the sheriff or any law enforcement that it's being used by people as a place where drugs are being used or exchanged, and it's just an old house. I, I mean, my view at least would be to say, well, that's not the problem we're trying to fix.
Yeah, we got bigger fish to fry.
Doesn't fall into the category.
Whose decision within this county is it going to be to say this is blighted?
I'd like to know the same. Building inspector and Greg, right?
Bill and Health Department, so we got, we got a situation-
The sheriff could help us with that, too.
With the criminal blight element of it, yeah.
We, we, we got a situation right now that it's, uh, I'm, I'm bringing through conver, through multiple conversations. There's a, there's a trailer that's, that's, that does not have any power hook to it, um, the sewage is dumping on the ground, that's a health department thing, not on the ground, but it might be inside a cemetery, okay, within a cemetery crew, and, and different things are happening at night, people are found in the mornings, the, the neighbors are getting up, and people are laying in the woods with no clothes on. That stuff that you got to, you gotta go after. I mean, I don't, why do you stop it? I mean, that trailer, if that's true, that mobile home's gotta be moved, or, or tore down or something. But I totally agree with that. But I don't, I don't know what to put in place to make it happen.
Well, I mean, I would, I would, uh, make the assumption that the most likely, uh, entity to discover that as a problem is gonna be the sheriff's department.
That's right, and it's gonna fall under criminal blight.
And, and then, um-
But that's the only thing I think he can have to do with it.
But I, I don't, you know, this, this, this statute that we're passing doesn't necessarily have, you know, criminal teeth, I mean, I would think the building inspector is who's gonna come in and actually declare it a blighted property.
Right.
But what may determine it, I think, what, what he was speaking of is multiple ca, uh, calls to the-
Reports from the sheriff being shared with the building inspector would-
He's had fifteen calls in sixty days, or something like that, on the, on the same address.
See, they're trying to tackle that down without this.
That's health and welfare.
You see what I'm saying?
Well, and, and if we need to, if, if you think it's necessary, Mr. Elder, if we, if we go ahead and get this thing adopted tonight, if Steve and the sheriff and the building inspector, if there's, if there's some sort of MOU that they should have in place to help follow this, then we can, we can do that as well, right?
This is, yeah, this is just one of those things where, you know, we, we've talked about this before, there are some things in the state code that are not necessarily written exactly the way you'd like them to be. And this is probably one of those statutes. And, you know, I, I suspect that if the board passes it tonight, it may be that six months or a year from now, you may say, hey, we got an issue we need to fine tune here.
Yes. So, maybe try it and see how it kind of goes.
That's kind of my thought, is, is let's see how it goes, if we need to come back in and, and fine tune it, we've got every opportunity to do so. And I think-
I agree with that.
And another thing, too, well, and, and I mean, I hear what you're saying, and, and, because you don't want, you don't want that unnecessary phone calls and tying them up in their times and everything, and I get that. But the action, the timeframe to take action, once the initial letters and stuff sent, that's to the discretion of the board.
Well, then I think we ought to go on and, and consider adopting it then.
Yeah. Well, then, if, if there's no more discussion, no ask for, uh, a motion to approve the abatement of derelict and blighted buildings as presented in I four.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right.
Go get them, Sheriff.
The planning commission appointment.
It sounds like you have a customer already.
It was supposed to be, we got a vacancy on District Three?
I am-
You hit, hit the blank.
A blank, a wall. Nobody wants to join in the fun, because they don't want to fill out that statement of economic interest.
All right, well, y'all, y'all heard him, Miss Norwood is still looking for someone.
We will make a plea to the general public, Billy put it in the paper, we need somebody to serve on the planning commission from District Three.
All right. All right, the, uh-
Lee Rogers would be a good one. Is he in District Three?
Yes, he is.
He would make a very good one.
Leo, either adding or some?
Yeah, either one of you.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, all right, you have anything on six, the commendation committee appointment? We will just leave that on-
Yeah, we'll leave that on that, okay.
Until we get that.
Yes, sir.
All right, the, uh, Crossroads Community Service Board Department, Mr. Collins.
Yes, um, we have a citizen that's been serving, and serves on many boards, it's Chuck Arneson, Charles Chuck Arneson, and he is completing his sixth year on Crossroads Community Services Board. Um, he's the current finance director, and he is going to resign at the end of this year, he's, he's gonna move on and do other things. He sent us a letter here in the board. Fortunately, this one was, uh, easy to fill, so, um, District Five, Holly Coats, Holly Gates Coats. She's a two thousand Virginia Tech Psychology Bachelor's, she's a two thousand and two Lawmood Masters in, um, counseling. She's currently the regional director for the United Methodist Foster Services, she's been twenty-two years in mental health services. Her job requires her that she's, uh, served the community, so it aligns with that, and I'd like to put her name forward, this appointment starting January first.
All right, board members, uh, Mr. Collins has brought forth a motion for Ms. Holly Coats.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, the, uh, voting credentials, Mr. Bowen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, normally, uh, when you go to, uh, when, for the voting for the Virginia Association of Counties, and they got their, they got their annual meeting, uh, normally, somebody has to be appointed, usually, it's the vice chair of the board, uh, or someone who is going, that, if the vice chair's not going, you can, you can so choose, but only one person can vote from this county, and that's what they're looking for. And, um, I know that, um, I, I recommend if, if Mr. Collins would accept that task, to, to appoint him as that.
I'm going to the, I'm going to the annual conference.
Good, you vote.
All right.
I did a, I did a motion.
All right, we need a motion to, uh-
I move we, uh, appoint Mr. Collins as the, our voting director.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Uh, and I'll make sure they, they could have noticed about that. Uh, the next one is VACOR voting, y'all have any nomination? If you don't, Mr. Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman, we can move on.
All right. We're gonna go to number four, Nottaway Code update.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I got, this is what, what I was hoping, Mr. Elder is here tonight. So, the Nottaway County Code, uh, our Nottaway County Code is very, very outdated, um, that was brought to my attention through Catherine Douglas, and, and, uh, and when I say outdated, it's underneath court side, a lot of times with the state code, am I correct? And this is a be, you're talking about the word beast, this is gonna be a beast, and even, even Gary said, y'all be spending a lot of money, and you getting a lawyer to do it, so he, he had some ideas, and just wanted to share that with you, but-
Yeah, and basically, I, we talked about this, and I kinda wanted to just run it by the board and at least make y'all aware of, of what our opinion of this issue is. Since we've started representing the county, which obviously hadn't been that long, what we've discovered is, it is awfully hard for us even to find what the county laws are. You know, if you go to the county website, you can click on county code. And I clicked on it today because I wanted to remember the exact numbers. It's three hundred sixty-four pages. And it's just a document, so if you want to find whatever law it is you're looking for, you need to start scrolling.
Ooh.
And that's a, that's a lot of reading. I mean, it takes us, I mean, literally, sometimes hours to find the ordinance we're looking for. It's really hard. And, you know, and it's not just us, it's also, you think about people in the community, you all just passed a blight ordinance. If, if some citizen of Notaway County wants to find a copy of that ordinance so they know what the law is, good luck. I, I don't know how you'd come across it. Now, I will say, I, I did look, and I don't think Mr. Zodi's still here. You've got on the county website, you can click on your zoning ordinances, your subdivision ordinances. Those are a little more clear-cut. They've got a table of contents you can follow along. Mr. Bowen's exactly right, if, if this is gonna be fixed, it's a pretty big job. And it, it would be something that if we wanted to do that, we'd, we'd wanna kinda study it and look into it and see how this could be organized. You know, what I'd encourage each of you to do, if you have a chance, is just go to the website MUNICODE. M U N I C O D E. That's a, a website that keeps codes of counties and towns and cities throughout Virginia. Blackstone is on MUNICODE. You can go to Blackstone.
M U N I.
M U N I C O D E. So the town of Blackstone's on MUNICODE, Farmville's on MUNICODE, Lunenburg County's on MUNICODE, Cumberland County's on MUNICODE.
Just that entry to be a part of that?
You know, I, I thought somebody would ask that. I have no idea. I, I'm assuming that MUNICODE is probably a, a service that you pay to upload everything. I actually tried to Google that and figure it out today to figure out, well, how does this stuff get into MUNICODE? Cause I had the same question. I know that in the town of Farmville, they recently hired a group called the Berkeley Group, who came in and basically compiled all the zoning ordinances and revised them and redid them. It was a fairly major project. You know, you all have tons of ordinances that have been passed over the years. They're just hard to find. If anybody, if anybody wanted to see what Notaway County's nuisance laws are, there's, there's just nothing you can click to find out about them, even for us. I mean, when we're trying to pull them up, when, when y'all ask us a question, we need to say, okay, well, what's the existing law? We get that three hundred sixty-four page document out and start flipping.
Well, it sounds like y'all are trying to lean towards getting an RFP, towards figuring out who to do the data entry and then who to continue to maintain.
Right, and, and we're in a, you know, budget, budget, budget. And so this is something I did not budget for, this is something, but I, I think, this, that, that thing is, should be a living document. And I think that's what this, this, that company, the MUNICODE, that they, they offer, I guess. I don't, you know, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, well, we put it on the side of the shelf and then we forget about it. And that's what's happened over the years, I'm pretty sure. They just, on a dust collector.
I would say just investigate it and see how it reach out to them, see what it costs.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, that's something we can help with, too. I mean, if you, I mean, obviously doing it in-house means you don't have to pay us to do it, I get that. You know, it's something we can look into. I will tell you, I mean, I, I printed it out today. If you click on the code of Notaway County, it says compiled in nineteen ninety-eight. You go to page one, and it lists all your members of the Board of Supervisors and.
From ninety-eight?
It's from ninety-eight.
Is that right?
I was looking at the names and trying to match them up, and I can tell none of y'all have been here since ninety-eight. But it's something that, that in my view at least, I, I think it's worth looking into. Last thing we're trying to do is try to add any expense to the county's budget, but.
Well, it's just like the comprehensive plan, that was twenty years old.
Right. So I'm, I'm just bored, I, I'll let you know, it's gonna be on unfinished business for discussion here and there, and anyway, I'll kinda keep going.
As long as it ain't two hundred and fifty thousand.
I know, it costs, costs, I know. But thank you, thank you, Mr. Elder, for catching that, and tells Catherine thank you, too.
All right, y'all seen what's on the consent agenda? I need a, oh, there's nothing on that one. Septemiks, I'm sorry. All right, I need a motion to accept the recommendations or amend the consent agenda.
Make that motion to accept.
All right, can I get a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? The correspondence items are also in your package, board members. And if, if y'all don't have anything, I would go ahead and move towards a motion for closed meeting if someone would like to read that. Good night.
Do we have the link?
Yeah. Yeah, you have to read it. Somebody has to read it.
I move that the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County, Virginia adjourned into closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia, two-two dash three-seven-one-one A seven consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consults pertaining to actual or probable litigation, specifically relating to matters now pending in the county administration.
All right, need a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We are now going into closed session.
Mr. Chairman will bring in Mr. Fitzgerald, and Mr. Elder said he will head on back towards Farmville, Virginia, I guess.
Okay, board members, make sure you leave your mics and turn them off.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County, Virginia has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting of the Board were heard, discussed or considered by the Board of Supervisors and three, no action was taken in the closed meeting regarding the items discussed. Need a second to that.
All right.
All right. Mr. Bowen, would you please roll call the Board, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, you so certify?
I certify.
Mr. Ingram, you so certify?
I certify.
Mr. Toth, you so certify?
I do certify.
Ms. Norton, you so certify?
I certify.
Mr. Chairman, you so certify?
I do.
Got a 5-0. Mr. Chairman, I'll make sure I put that in here.
Okay. All right. And Mr. Bowen, while you're talking, I know you love to, so let's get your report real quick.
Yeah. Thank you for that introduction. The, we met with the Finance Committee and I just want to share that we did send the Treasurer, three of our staff members went to some bright training, which was very informative and, you know, and the bright system, which is our finance system, if you put junk in, junk comes out, and so that's very educational, and they were looking for some more type of training and the Finance Committee said, listen, Steve, if you can find some funding there, you know, do as much employee development that we can, and, you know, we had, I may be looking for y'all to pull some of your, insisting y'all not going to the conferences, I may pull some of your money to, for the staff training, Mr. Chairman, but I haven't got that far yet. We got to get this audit done and get that thing on track first. The Virginia Heartland Regional Economic Development Alliance, which I'm the chairman of, we are looking for a director, we develop a job description, and we have the position that is out there for advertisement. The evaluations that of the staff is complete, I have three more to review with the employees, and then I'll have the evaluations done. And that's about my report right now.
All right. Well, thank you. Mr. Collins, do you have any comments, sir?
Just let's continue to focus on the savings that we can have at the LRA, at the landfill, just by working hard and looking for those places where government spending is out of control. So I appreciate everybody just working towards that goal. If you see something pointed out.
Amen.
Let Steve know.
All right. Ms. Ingram?
I'm happy that the Cares Committee bonded with the architects. I think that's going to really help in final plans. I want to thank again the community and the emergency service people for all the help they gave us and for the concern and things that I've heard from people, you know, concerning the fire at our home. I think we're on the right path. I think we've got, you know, we're doing things that have to be done, and I hope the public recognizes that.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Norton?
Reiterate Mr. Ingram's, that I hope the public does realize that we are trying our best. I just told Mr. Toth I feel like we're the janitors. It's just, we've got a lot to clean up. I'm not being derogatory to the past administration or anything, it's just so much that needs to be fixed and getting up to speed, but we're trying our best to do it in the best way we can.
All right. Mr. Toth?
Likewise, I, we are working towards it. We're being given more information, I feel like, than any other board that has sat here for a very long time, that which board member should be given, because those are the ultimate decision makers. I was asked once, how much power does a board member have? I said none.
Amen.
And then I was, then I told the person who asked me that, which happened to be my 14-year-old son, but as a board, they've got all the power. So, and I'd like to keep us thinking that, and we work together the way we do, and we're going to have different views about different things at a certain time, and if we don't, then that's not a very healthy board out. So I look forward to working with the citizens in my district and overall Notaway and the rest of the four members on the board, as well as the people that kind of keep us together on the right path, like Andrea, and if I'm pronouncing her name right. I didn't mention, I didn't mention Steve, but him too, especially both of them and the rest of them.
Mr. Abbott calls it county administrator.
Yeah.
And I agree.
You're doing a good job, Steve, and I think you've proven a whole lot of naysayers wrong, and I hope you continue to know that you got the support of the board, and you're, and you're going to mess up too. And if you don't mess up, it's because you ain't doing nothing. Always remember that.
And I just want to say, to respond to that, as a board member, I do know what it's like when you don't get all the information, and I just, and that's what I'm trying to do, is make sure y'all have all the information that I have. And let you, and let you make the, make the decisions on that, and I execute, okay?
That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Mr. The, talking about how Notaway citizens are, you hear the ugly. You hear the ugly. You hear about the keyboard warriors and everybody attacking people. You hear about the unfortunate part of some constitutional officers being attacked with phone calls because of decisions made. Unfortunately, like the Treasurer's Office and Commission of Revenue, they're taking a beating. Tax bills went out, you know? That's a tough job over there. I know I spoke with Ms. Hudson today, and they're still upbeat, but it's, it means something to be kind, and I think we all ought to remember that. And I'll use one person in particular, your neighbor, Jim Sneed. Jimmy and his wife then took a load of stuff down to Carolina. So we need more people that care, like Jimmy, and understand, and try, and try to keep the peace as best we can and move forward together, like you all said. I mean, we, I hate to say this, but we almost sound like a broken record up here sometimes. Moving forward, stay together, moving forward, stay together. What, damn it? That's a good thing. How about that?
It is. And we wouldn't disagree sometimes, but that's all right.
All right. So, and with that, I'll take a, Happy Halloween, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Happy Halloween, motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have all in favor signify by standing up.
All right.